Okay. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett, El Cerrano. One minute to discuss the implications of $8 billion revenue bond issue plus a 6% operations and maintenance fee which equals almost the total deficit for this year for the entire city council. How can we start? A special assessment district that is citywide does not really reflect the needs of the particular areas. Four hundred areas of flooding, but they're not uniformly distributed throughout the city, so why should El Cerrano have to pay for the valley? Special assessment districts are tailored to help those that are going to gain the greatest benefit, not the citywide. This is, it could be the beginnings of a public-private partnership for stormwater. They do occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Taylor?
Yes, hi. Stephanie from the Green LA Coalition. Good afternoon. I just wanted to express the support of the Green LA Coalition. I think we understand the critical need for revenue for stormwater projects, but I do want to, though, offer some concerns that we have in general, that there must be community-based projects, especially with nonprofits, need to be eligible for this sort of funding, especially...
(noise)
Okay.
No, she actually had, it was reset. She had to reset it.
Oh, okay.
You have two minutes.
Oh, okay. So especially since we're typically concerned with smaller projects to restore the urban ecosystems, and these are more typically done in partnership with community-based organizations. So therefore, we think a very strong criteria for project selection would be necessary, as well as an oversight committee as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Melanie Winter.
I'm Melanie Winter, founder and director of The River Project, and I would wholeheartedly support this funding mechanism. We have talked for years and years about the dire need to have an ongoing staple funding source to manage, more appropriately manage, our stormwater as a resource. And I think it's critical for folks like the first gentleman who commented here to understand that we're not just managing floods in certain neighborhoods, and we're not just cleaning up the water before it hits the beach. We are managing, and we should focus more in the language of this document, on making certain that we do focus more on TMDL implementation and water resources, getting that stormwater into groundwater, especially in the San Fernando Valley and other areas of LA where we have the groundwater space available, and capturing and reusing. Not just capturing to put it out to the ocean so it's clean there, but we have a dire need for water supply in this city, dire. And I think it's critical that as we do our outreach and in the language of this, that we make that clear, this nexus here.
Thank you very much. Mark Gold.
On behalf of Heald Bay, we're strongly supportive of this in concept. We've been discussing this with the mayor's office and Department of Public Works for nearly three years. Passage to the Water Quality Compliance Master Plan, which is before you soon as well, was an integral first step before moving forward. Now finally, the city has a plan to protect public health and the environment by cleaning up water pollution, as well as augmenting local water supply and providing flood control. There's an operation and maintenance crisis and water quality crisis in LA. Prop O clearly was not enough. There's no money for operation and maintenance of those projects. But we do have some concerns, and probably similar to some that you may have, which is as most important, is we got to pass this measure and be careful in how we do it. We're concerned about the phased approach that's taken on actually increasing the fees. The polling, which is 60% support, is a $55 one-time increase, not phased in over five years, and that's a little bit of a concern. We have to do this right. We have to make sure that it's going to pass so we don't end up with a failed measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a question?
Yes, a couple of questions for you, Mark. You were quoted in the LA Times saying that you've been pushing this for three years.
Right.
And once again, the word "process" is rattling through the troops in my community, okay? And when we passed Measure O, I don't think people realize they are going to get a property hit tax as well down the road, that, you know, we'll come, we'll do this, and so and so forth, and it will be an ongoing thing. Were we aware when we did O that the maintenance and the ongoing would be an additional hit? And did, at that point, did we think it would be a general treasury forever, or did we ever think of an assessment?
Absolutely. It's something that I personally spent a lot of time talking to Ron Deaton about, which a lot of you remember, was the original architect. Obviously, councilperson Perry and Councilman Garcetti were hugely involved in this as well. But it's the same problem we see statewide, which is there's sort of this false promise of moving forward with bond measures. It's great because you do land acquisition, you get great projects going forward, but all it does is exacerbate financial crises in that regard. So we have some great projects that are planned for Prop O, some of which are getting implemented, but there's no dollars to even come close to compliance with water quality standards right now, let alone operation and maintenance of the projects that are getting funded. And so obviously, it's never become more clear than because of the financial crisis that's occurring right now in the city and the state.
Yeah. I was saying that last point on this is if we were to go forward this now, and if I were to get a bill in my mail, I would say no, because I'm freaking out with all my DWP bills, I'm freaking out with everything else, even though I'm a real believer in this. Don't you think people have had enough at this moment? We should maybe work through a process, explain it all, and maybe a year from now or two deal with it, something that gives people a sense that we know what we're doing?
That's all well and good, except for the fact that you're in gross violation of the Clean Water Act right now. And so if you are ready to be sued by environmental groups, or by the Regional Water Board, or by the EPA for failure to protect public health and the environment, that's a significant risk that you're also putting the taxpayers at. So you're sort of between a rock and a hard place. Obviously, you know, having to get this to the property owners as quickly as this is is not ideal. And so I think it's very, very important our organization will volunteer to work as much round the clock with city to try to make sure this is done right and not jammed down people's throats. And I think that's a real, a big concern, is for people to understand what this is all about, and I don't think that part of it has gotten out at all yet.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Nancy Steele, if you'd let the seats, Nancy Steele and Jack Humpherville.
I'm Nancy Steele with the Los Angeles and San Gabriel Rivers Watershed Council, and we also support this proposal in concept to create a dedicated funding source to clean up water. We've believed for a long time, as the managers of the Los Angeles Basin Water Augmentation Study, that stormwater is an asset and should be managed as such to augment our groundwater sources and our drinking water sources. We believe that the city, it's time for the city to have a dedicated funding source for operations and maintenance and to protect our water resources. This proposal has a nexus to water supply, habitat, and recreation, and of course, compliance with the Clean Water Act is vital. And so we also will work with you and with city staff to help iron out the details and ensure that this is a good measure that will serve the city well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Humpherville.
Are you going to set the clock at the minute? I support clean water, but I don't support another cram-down process like we had in Measure B. This is what we're going through with one minute. Just because it's green doesn't mean it doesn't have to be vetted. Just because our 55% mayor wants it doesn't mean that the council doesn't have to do it. Were the Prop O funds properly spent? Why is the budget, operating expenses going from $30 million to $75 million? Why is interest going from zero to $40 million? Do we have the answer to that? What is the impact on the general fund? We're paying you over $400,000 a year, each one of you fully loaded, to review and vet this. The idea, 270 plus 100 plus benefits. Just because it's going to a vote is an excuse. You want to put something on a vote? How about my ratepayers advocate? You are playing with your own reputations here, and you're playing with the city's reputation, and you're playing with the Department of Sanitation. You need to make sure the city retains its credibility.
Thank you.
Do you want to know my $400,000 number?
I'd love to hear it, because I, my wife's in, see that I tell you that.
180 in compensation, 50% benefits, probably, that doesn't...
50%?
Well, that's what the numbers say in some of the applications we got, plus the $100,000 plus the expense account.
The $100,000?
The slush fund.
Slush?
But it's money you get to play with.
I get to play with $7 billion, because that's what our budget is.
Okay.
I don't show them my income tax, I'll tell you that.
Thank you.
It ain't good.
Play with my neighbor's kids. I play with my neighbor's kids.
Actually, he wants more than that.
You have the most in Greece.
He's over that.
Okay, and I just want to, I've hooked on a lot of campaign age over the years, and just went through something that didn't pass, and I do know one thing, that working and building consensus throughout, if you want, people need to support this effort. It hasn't been done, and so, you know, I guess I've been working on this proposal for a while, and I think your plan to target the county assessors' August 10, 2009 deadline for updating property tax information is your goal. And if this is the case, I'm a little concerned, not a little concerned, I'm very concerned, because if I get involved in something, I want it to pass if it's meant to be passed. Why didn't you, didn't you involve the community, not the community, committee earlier? I understand somebody said that you're working with the mayor's office for a couple of years, several years, and, you know, we had a conference call the other night, and I'm trying to affect all of you, but I don't really guess what's going on here, so why don't you tell us?
Councilmember Perry, Enrique Zaldivar, I'm the director of the Bureau of Sanitation. And on point to your question with regards to what we believe our outreach has been to date, we certainly, as you heard some of the speakers mention earlier, that this is something that we had been discussing with the community at large for quite some time, in terms of the water quality issues and the water quality program for the city and the need for funding. So it is not new in that regard.
And I don't want to nitpick, you know, I like all of you, great people, and I have a good relationship with all of you, but I don't even know what community, tell me.
Well, community of...
The water community, the environmental, the mayor's office, what? Just tell me.
Community at large. We did not have specific meetings with average common residents. That, I cannot tell you...
Tell me who you did meet. Give me a...
Environmental organizations, neighborhood councils, with some of them. And about the program needs, it was, that kind of outreach was not specific to the proposed charge here, the proposed fee. It was about the program funding needs. That's the kind of outreach we have done.
Can you elaborate on, as you did all this outreach, why are you now in a position where this has to be expedited? Why didn't you approach the committee sooner so we can start putting this out for public consumption and review? Let me ask you this. Is there, was there some internal decision within your department not to bring this to the committee sooner so we can start getting it out in the public? Or what happened here? It seems like there's a breakdown somewhere along the line of communication. I don't understand why we're, you know, starting Sunday night with a conversation of how we're doing this. So was there an internal decision? To do it this way?
Councilmember Perry, the, as, the forecast for the general fund is being debated as we speak. You start with those hearings next week on Monday, and a mayor's proposed budget. It became very clearly evident that this program, the stormwater program, has a significant general fund subsidy, just under $25 million right now, $25 million. And I don't have to tell you, you know this even better than me, what kind of challenge the general fund faces. And so that is a starting point, if you will. In addition, is the inevitable need possibly for more general fund subsidy if we don't do something about bringing independent revenue to this program, and that is in the form of this TMDL compliance, some of which are already underfought right now, this very moment. And so not just myself...
No, I agree with you. I understand all that, and I'm asking you a process question. The reason that I'm asking you is, you know, you're preaching to the converted, I think everybody believing in clean water, that our city has worked very vigorously on Proposition O, so we understand that. I am asking you a process question because, I mean, you may not realize it, I'm actually trying to help you, because the next question I have is so if it doesn't pass, if you lose, then what are you going to do? Because, you know, in fact, you know, in a way, I don't want to analogize to Measure B, but, you know, that was rushed and pushed through, and, you know, this is how the people responded. They didn't pass it, it was close, but ultimately, it didn't pass. So I'm asking you a question about your own internal process, because I'm trying to figure out why we are in this situation now, and I can't come up with an answer.
In the context of the budget, Madam Chair, the budgetary component of this is the general fund. So that didn't come out until...
No, but you've been working on this for three years, or talking with the mayor's office for three years.
Since March 2nd, 2007, when I put the motion in.
Okay. So, okay, the budget situation is not a surprise. We all knew this was coming. So tell me, was there an internal decision to approach us at this point with the assumption that we would be able to rush this through?
It has taken a budgetary context as opposed to just a program context, Councilmember Perry, and it is because of that that it's now tied to the timeline of the budget. And in looking at the timeline for the potential approval of the fee increase, for it to be effective, where it to be approved by you first and foremost, and then ultimately the voters, is that for it to be effective this fiscal year, we, the vote must be known and the tax, the information must be made available to the county assessor by August 10. And that gives us this appearance of wanting to rush this.
Okay. Tell us, is this a property-related fee or a property assessment? The reason I'm asking you this is because Prop 218 establishes different notice requirements for either of these. A property-related fee has a 90-day public notice and election requirement, so that's two 45-day period requirements, whereas a property assessment has a 45-day notice and public hearing requirement, at which time ballots are tabulated. So if you could, maybe you want to...
I will defer to our colleague.
Colin Chu from the City Attorney's Office.
Speaking to the mic.
Colin Chu from the City Attorney's Office. Yes, the, this is a property-related charge, and it fits within Article 13 DC, which provides for a 245-day period.
Okay. All right, thank you. So with the 245-day notification requirements, is that why you are asking for this to be expedited? Take us through the time, the timeline.
That is correct, Councilmember Perry. What we are asking you today, and this is only we're asking today, is for an approval on that first preliminary notice of the two notices that Colin alluded to, that has its first 45-day review period.
And then when does that start? If you back, work backwards from the August, what is it, August 10, 2009?
No, this first notice, we intend to have it out on the, May 9. The start of the 45-day period, the first 45, is May 9. That's the start. What we are looking for is authorization to start the printing and the mailing, which takes some time to have that distributed to 800,000 property owners throughout the city.
Okay, Mr. Chu, if you could tell me, if Proposition 218 applies in this situation, that assumption is correct, then if we do face a legal challenge on this process, is that a defensible decision to take?
Yes, it is.
Can you tell me why?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, the Constitution provides you need to have at least a 45-day period before you can conduct the public hearing, and so...
Okay, I'll tell you the reason I'm asking. The proposal calls for an increase from $23 to $99 over a four-year period for the average property owner. I want to make sure that we have informed the public as to how this increase was determined, the cost and how they, I guess, backed into it, and what specific projects, just like we did in Proposition O, the ballot language was very specific and very focused on specific projects, which I think, electonite, that was one of the only things that passed, I think at, what was it, 67%? Because we were able to...
More.
More?
Seven.
Seven, okay. All right, transpose the numbers.
Which was the second highest?
Yes. So, you know, obviously, in that case, we were able to draft language that was compelling and caused people to be confident in what they were voting for. So I want to know how these numbers were reached. And while you're answering that, if you can pull an extra chair up, if there's anybody here from the mayor's office, they could come up too. Is there anybody here? Okay, great. You can pull up an extra chair. So who can answer that about how those numbers were derived?
Let me go ahead and get started into the, how the numbers were derived to lead to the estimate that we're looking at. Adal Hashkali, Assistant Director of Bureau of Sanitation. Let me just walk through the numbers that Enrique, okay? Yes, I, okay. If you go to the package that you have before you, after the schedule, there'll be a breakdown, after the page that has the schedule like this, there's a table that shows the program needs, and it talks about the revenue needs. And I'll start off by going through the program needs. The current stormwater maintenance activities that we have right now, it's roughly around $31 million. The operation and maintenance for Proposition O projects as they come online, and you'll see the gradual increase as these projects come online, that's roughly will be around $80 million by the fifth year. That is currently unfunded. Additional catch based in cooling, state swoop activities, to basically right now, make the current requirements that we have by now. We have a deficit of $24 million because we have the additional work that we're doing that's not funded from the program. The flood control projects, we have 400 flood control locations throughout the city that are problem locations every time it rains throughout the city, and those projects is roughly estimated at this point at about $650 million. Then we have a TMDL requirements, and that is a requirement beyond what Prop O has provided for, and it's about $160 million. There's actually, in the following pages, if you follow the presentation right now, you would have a slide here that shows the specific Proposition O projects. This is the first need, which is the Prop O projects that are being paid by the bond, but the operation and maintenance will follow right after the construction is complete. The yellow is the construction schedule, and the red is the O and N operation. The page, this one right here, after that schedule...
The pagination got lost in the printing. We hadn't paginated.
We got it found. It's the first table. So the first was a summary of all of the needs, and I'll walk through each of the needs. And these are the Proposition O projects as we move forward, and the need for those operation and maintenance. For example, Rosecrans Recreation Center Stormwater Project, it'll be complete somewhere around January of 2010, and that's when the operation and maintenance will kick in. That's the fourth project down on that list for Prop O projects. As more projects get completed, that need for operation and maintenance will increase in a, in a reach of about $18 million in the year 2013, '14. The next page following is a, the universe of TMDLs. Some already have, are in place, and we are in an implementation phase, and we need to implement these projects on a tight schedule. And the follow-up chart is a chart that shows the TMDL that are in place right now, that we have to be in compliance with, and the construction and the operation of those projects. And you can see that the construction is needed to meet those projects, starting with 1011 is the peak, 0910 is start, because Prop O has helped us tremendously in getting a head start on this. But beyond that, we need to start implementing more projects. That's an example. Burn Creek by itself will be a huge investment, about $130 million, to construct many of the projects that we have to do, multi-use projects to clean water such as wetlands and et cetera, that we have to do green streets to address and meet comply with the Burn Creek TMDL for bacteria, for metals, et cetera. And the next thing is the flood control chart. And in the city right now, we have 421 projects, $630 million for construction. Those are prioritized, and they have no funding to do those projects. And these are areas, every time it rains, you know, there's locations throughout the city, Swarthmore Avenue, Stone Drain, 25th Street near Don Shubas Road East, Branford Street, Western Avenue, you know, Ventura Boulevard, et cetera. There's a lot of locations in the city that require the oil leaf and drainage, and that cost is roughly about $6 million a year. So if we go back to the summary table in the front that we had here, the need for financial, the program needs grows from $81 million all the way to $250 million roughly. And what we're trying to do around to meet that need, we're going to debt finance the capital projects, and that would bring the revenue need down to, a range from $65 million a year to $120, which is what we are asking for through this proposed five-year rate increase, to generate the revenue to allow us to bond finance or debt finance the capital projects and meet the O and N rates. Thank you. Madam Chair, yes, in as much as, as you said earlier, that the derivation of the program funding needs and all of that must and needs to be further vetted out, I just confirmed with a legal counsel here that what we're asking you today is for a preliminary notice that is non-binding in any shape or form, that should you decide down in the next steps to support us with a request, that that, these numbers can be changed down from what we're saying in this preliminary notice.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then thank you, Mr. Chu, for adding that language in. Representative from the mayor's office... that language in. Representative from the mayor's office, would you like to add anything to this? And again, I just want to reiterate, I don't feel like I really got an answer to the question as to why this is, we are in this situation now with respect to the timing, because ultimately, I'm going to ask you, what are you going to do if we lose? So...
Steven Malley, Office of the Mayor, Chairwoman, Chairperson. I'd like to, to extend our gratitude from the mayor's office for taking this matter in a very expeditious manner. It came, it came to us during the budget process, putting the budget together. This is a problem that we've never come across before. The magnitude that we're talking about in the budget, budgetary problems that we have right now, as you have seen in the proposed budget, are not small. Having said that, during our deliberation process in putting the budget together, we did realize, having done a zero-based budgeting on this schedule, Schedule 7, that is Stormwater Pollution Abatement Schedule, we did realize that there is a big subsidy to Stormwater Pollution Abatement Fund in a magnitude that we didn't realize before. Initially, we thought it was something like $12 million, and then we realized that it was much bigger than that. In addition to that, we also realized that there are ONM costs that need to be taken care of for Prop O, that of course were not taken care of in the initiative.
Mike, closer.
And so, we came to a realization, not realizing that there were two 45-day requirements, we thought that it was only one. Talking to the city attorney, we realized that it was two. So regardless, we came to a crossroads, and we decided that this would be the best thing to do. We apologize for the short notice, but we feel that is something that we really need to do.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And then thank you, that gets a little closer to what I'm asking, although I guess conversations were going on for three years. But I'll, I'll ask it again, I'm going to take a break, and then have the Chair of Budget and Finance ask questions next, and let's not forget Mr. Karagani, he's here too.
Right.
We never, we never forget so long.
They'll get lonely.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Let me ask a question and a couple of things with my concerns with that. Could you explain to us again the issue of fee versus assessment, and how that plays into this, and how that would, I'm assuming one or the other qualifies it to go through this process?
Yes, Chu, if you want to...
If I may. The difference between an assessment and a property, property-related fee or charge, with an assessment, the amount that you collect has to be for the special benefits only. General benefits cannot be collected. With the charge, a fee or charge, that constraint is not there.
So when you say, so you're saying general, general benefit is what we refer to as a general fund, you just can't create an additional fee to put into the general fund? It has to be specific to solving an issue, solving a problem, or creating, or paying a fee on the service like we did with the trash fee? Is that...
Well, in both instances, in both the assessment and a fee or charge, you are limited to specifically a purposes for which you have that fee or charge or assessment.
Okay.
Your preference is that, one, you can only collect for the specifically identified benefit to each parcel, that's an assessment. With the fee or charge, the limitation is cost recovery, you can only recover your costs.
And so on this process, what are we doing, a fee or an assessment?
We're doing a fee.
Okay. And could you go over the two versus one day, two versus one 45-day period again?
Yes. The state constitution requires that there be, for fees and charges, two 45-day periods, whereas the assessment process in the constitution requires only one 45-day period. The two 45-day periods have two components. The first one is for a public hearing. You send out notices, the constitution says that you cannot have a public hearing earlier than 45 days from the date of mailing. The second 45 days is a, is for purposes of holding an election. After the close of the public hearing, you cannot have the election until 45 days later.
Okay. Let me ask also, on dealing with the fee, how do we project, if we're saying it's for cost recovery, do you project five years out that the fee goes from 22-something to almost $100? Are we saying that we are already covering those fees now and subsidizing them? How do we come up with this five-year range?
I can answer that, Councilmember Parks. The five-year projected program funding needs are based on our best estimate of the kinds of projects and improvements that we will have to put in place to comply with the TMDLs that we know of as of right now. So what we are saying, that this revenue level would give us sufficient funding to carry out our compliance efforts, as well as with other flood control. And so we have the derivation of the cost as a best estimate.
Okay, but we're saying on, best estimate on projects that are unknown?
Not unknown, but the actual cost is not fully known. I mean, it's a best estimate as of right now.
And with that fee, we're going to recover the full cost recovery of the specific proj- where's that list of projects?
It is actually a good partial list that's attached to your briefing.
Here?
Yes, to that briefing. If you go toward the back, you will see in the sort of faded black and white toward the back, the last insertion there, you will see a list, and that's a partial list, that's it.
Okay. And so that, this list takes us through the five-year cycle of moving from 20-some dollars to 99?
That's correct.
Okay. It's, does, in our assumptions or estimates, do we complete this list, or are there other items that are going to be added, or is this funding that will only get to part of this list? Where are we on that?
The list can certainly be refined, or can be changed around. Certainly, if it's a list that will result in higher estimated cost, then I would have to say that the fee as proposed right now then wouldn't cover it. But the list itself, as long as we stay within the proposed revenue level, then the list can certainly be, can be modified.
Okay. But our estimation is that we'll complete this list?
Yes.
And then let me ask, there was something mentioned in one of our, your reports about someone did a community survey of about 1,500 people. Did we get access to that, or...
Sure. Yeah. Good afternoon, Shuwan Karagani, Bureau of Sanitation, Councilmember, the County of Los Angeles in October of 2008. They did series of focus group with 1,500 property owners throughout the County of Los Angeles, and they asked number of questions, some of which were, does the clean water and public health and safety is important to them? Are they willing to support a fee to pay for cleaning the waters in the County of Los Angeles, and to protect public health and safety? More than 60, I think it was 64%, supported of the 1,500 that were, that were asked those questions, responded positively.
Okay, now you said the county did this, or...
County, County of Los Angeles conducted the survey.
Okay, did we get access to the questions in the survey?
Not personally myself, but John Fairbank, the company that performed and conducted the survey, gave us briefing from time to time, as far as the, how the focus groups were being conducted and the result.
Okay, you said with 64%?
64%, I think that was for a specific dollar amount.
The other issue is that, let me ask from the city attorneys, just a question. If we go forward on this, and you have this five-year tier, do you have, the public is aware that we're talking about raising their fees for a five-year period, and they would know what that is? Do we have the ability within that framework to have an annual approval that at some point, that you would plug in as whether they were needed or not, or are we saying, when you vote for it, it's the five years or nothing?
The ballot question, as I envision it currently, would be all or nothing for five years.
Say it again?
The, the request before you is for a five-year
Okay.
annual series of increases. We haven't, I guess until we complete the public hearing, I guess we have not made a decision on what the ballot question is. I think after the public hearing, you can restructure it if you like, I mean...
I'm just trying to find legally, can you, I mean, what we'd be asking the public is that you either are going to pay $22 for whatever period of time, or you're going to go in a five-year cycle that will move it up to 99. Once that cycle starts, there's no return. Is that what we're saying?
Well, if the question that's presented to the voters is for all five years, then the answer is you're stuck with it.
Okay. Is that one of the strategies that we're asking for all, or a portion, or one, have we created that strategy?
I think, not answering under legal, but the, the opportunity for reconsidering
the strategy of the five years and each rate will exist, as we said earlier, from when this notice, preliminary notice goes out, to when the hearing is held, and when the actual vote, solicitation for vote goes out.
But it would appear when we go out to the public, we'd have some strategy that we're going to be asking them, are we going to, I mean, initially, we're going to be going out for one year, four years, three years? It wouldn't appear that we would send something out, and then after the community process, we then can decide on what our strategy is, which may be somewhat inconsistent from the input we receive from the community initially.
Yeah.
Councilmember Peter Chavaria, from the city attorney's office. Just for clarification, even though there would be an approval for five years at specific amounts in those five years, there's nothing in the law specifically, or 218, that says that you would have to charge that full amount in any given year. And in fact, if, if the reviews...
Beautiful dream.
Well, if the review says that our cost in fact not support the fee for any given year, we would have to reduce it. We can't charge more than we actually...
I mean, so would that be an annual council action to say, next year it's going to be $5 more, and the following year is $6 less, or...
I'm sorry, the fees would be set at one time for all five years, but I think the department is under an obligation to review them and report to you if, in fact, those fees for any given year are excessive, so that they can be reduced.
So we'd have to make a council action each year as to the amount of the fees, whether they go up or down? But they'd have to be a council action, even though we may get approval for five? We have to make a definitive action on that?
What, what I would envision would be an ordinance after the election, assuming there's approval of it by the voters, it would be an ordinance that would set the fee for those five years. But in each year, in anticipation of, say, the adoption of the budget, the department would have to report whether those, that fee is in fact supported by the realities, which we're now estimating. And you, you would reduce that fee, you wouldn't necessarily have to if in fact the costs were beyond the amount that was approved. But it would be a review on a year-by-year basis, not necessarily a setting of the fee. The fee would be set at the beginning.
And my last couple of questions, just on the voting process. If we're going by parcel and the owner of the parcel, as opposed to a general election, do we disenfranchise people who would normally be involved, such as tenants and people who vote on issues, which I would assume that if this was passed, at some point is passed through to multifamily residents, if they're, I mean, do we create a disenfranchised issue if a person that's a renter doesn't get to vote, but the owner does, as it relates to this process we're talking about versus a regular election?
The fee is contemplated by, by the constitution to be imposed on the property owner. It's, it's a property-related fee...
But we know what property owners do.
And, and in fact, it, the constitution authorizes the charge to be placed on the property owner, in the election therefore, to be a vote of the property owners, or in the alternative, if the city so chooses, by an election of the voters with a two-thirds approval.
Yeah.
There is an alternative.
Being that, that's why I'm asking the question, that if somebody is a renter and they're in that building, it's going to eventually come to them through rent increases or in some fashion, that we're, if we take the route we're, we're talking about, we're basically saying the land, the owner gets to make the call, and the people in many of these multifamily buildings have no say?
And that is in fact what the constitution says.
Okay, so I mean, but...
That be one or the other.
If we make a choice, it depends on who we may choose to disenfranchise then.
Well, I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't characterize it as disenfranchised.
That's just my words. I mean, as a city attorney, I wouldn't say that.
But which, thank you. But bottom line is, which, which of those two alternatives the council selects?
Okay. Mr. Garcia, then Mr. Rosendahl, and then down there on the, what's that?
Extreme right.
Southern, southern flank.
Extreme right.
On your extreme left.
Actually, the rest of your row, because he's extreme left, I'm extreme right.
It's all a matter of perspective. So, I start here with just some, some principles, which is that, yes, we do have a subsidy, and this council and mayor and previous mayor have, I think, made a commitment to ending some of our subsidies. Street sweeping is something that certain people enjoy, and everybody pays for it. It's the same as the trash pickup, although now with apartment owners, or most apartments, people can get that trash pickup today. And, you know, it's something the councils talked a lot about is expanding street sweeping, but we are unable to do that. And I, I'd hate to see part of this not be attached to expansion of street sweeping too, I'll just make that note. I also hold a second principle that, that the time, that I think, you know, it was very important when Ms. Perry and I, you know, were the father and mother of Prop O, it's a very nice child we had. We, we had clean water. We decided to stop fighting. You know, we were suing and suing and suing and suing, and many cities were suing and suing and suing. We said, well, what if we didn't sue anymore? And we actually asked the voters what they wanted to do. And, and it was second only to the zoo bond in terms of the, the vote that we got. And I think that was very instructive, especially as we're looking at this, and especially as people are scared about two-thirds. For what it's worth, I mean, that was a resounding vote from the people. What I didn't like about it, the only thing I didn't like about it, well, two things, is one, we always knew that it was not going to be enough, and you, you were all very clear about that. And so I would reframe, I would ask the mayor's office to reframe it, it's not a failure of Prop O. Prop O never pretended it was going to do the $5 billion worth of, of, or more, of clean water stuff. So when I read that, I was just a little bit kind of cautious of saying, well, the voters, you know, the implication was that Prop O hadn't done what it was supposed to. I do believe that it has done what it's supposed to, we just always knew it was going to be way, way too little. And we've involved a big process in that. So that's an important reframing of that. So that's one thing I didn't like, it wasn't enough, but we had to try where we could try. And then the second piece of it, that is, you know, that was not flawed, but that needs us to go further, is obviously that when we looked at Prop O as well, we knew that there are going to be certain more comprehensive projects that we would have, and later TMDLs that it wouldn't address. And so we talked about a second or a third. And I don't like going, doing these things with bonds, because voters pay for them, and I don't think Mr. Rosendahl's because they don't know it's coming. Although sometimes they do, because bonds often, at the state level, of course, it's not coming out of property taxes, whereas at the local level they are. But bonds are like paying with a credit card. And yet, it's much tougher to get people to just do a tax increase, which is paying with cash, even though it's more in their interest to do so. It's just one of the things of human nature, and we have to figure out a better way to communicate that. But people will take their credit card to the market and buy things off the shelf. They won't give cash to do that, for whatever reason. So we wind up paying a lot more as property owners for what we could have bought for a lot less. So I like the idea of doing this through a fee increase, and we can do that both on a ballot as well as, as, well, a ballot for all the voters, as well as a mailed ballot. The, I think it's very critical, though, for us to see what that research looked like. Because for, for me, when we looked at Prop- for me, when we looked at Prop O, we were very deliberate about Prop O and making sure that it could pass and making, and people didn't believe it. And it not only passed, it surpassed our polling numbers by, I think, 3% in the end. And, you know, I don't, I don't like going out and doing something that doesn't win because if we don't win, to answer your question, Madam Chair, I don't think we have option to. I think we set ourselves back for a long time if we don't do the process right on this. People will say, you know, yet again, this was something that was rushed through, this was something that we don't know. And I agree with what Mr. Gold said, I think that case needs to be made very carefully. And sure, I would love to see this happen this year because we've been subsidizing and we have the need. And I don't think we've failed. I think we've actually done better than almost any big city in America in meeting more TM D L requirements than anybody else, but we've got a heck of a lot more coming and some of them we're behind on. So, you know, we need that money right away, but it's worse to want that money so badly that we never get any money at all. So that's, you know, I don't have a clear direction on this today, but I do want to see that sort of research before I can make an informed guess. Everybody on this committee runs for office and deals in politics. You know, you're usually the experts on almost everything else, but that's one thing I trust my colleagues on the most because we go to voters. And I think we know and we can look at data and we can read polls and we can see where people are at. And I think also, without a description, and you can't necessarily do it, well, I don't know, a city attorney can better inform us about the election law piece of this, of what is proper for the city to be communicating and not. But it's my memory that of course we can't have any advocacy coming out of City Hall once this is put forward, correct? I mean, it's just like if we went to the regular ballot. So with that, I mean, somebody outside of City Hall should explain to me and my colleagues when we're not on city time, how a campaign will be waged and won. And otherwise, it's just asking us to jump and to jump and then possibly be blamed and set ourselves back. And that was a real sea change when we passed Prop O. It was a very, very important moment for the city. But as we look through the projects, we're like, wow, that's it. And we kind of always knew that. And 500 million was the largest clean water bond at the local level for stormwater in the nation's history. And yet the scale of this problem is so immense. The last thing I'll say is, in looking at the scale of this too, the federal piece is very important because what we saw for many years is a scaling up of clean water requirements, a good thing, and a scaling back of federal funding forward. So that's why we've had, you know, local bureaucrats who've come to us and said, we can't do this, and another city saying, sue or do whatever you can to stop because they're right. It's tough to have these unfunded mandates from Washington. But for us to really be comprehensive about this too, you know, in looking at some of the pieces that we're looking at in our ad hoc committee on the reinvestment and recovery act, recovery and reinvestment act, where we see any pots of fundings for this coming year that can maybe address some of this while we make sure we're at the right place for a long-term solution to this. I do appreciate, and one of the things I do want to point out for those that are listening, that quite often people say, because it's so reflexive and so easy to say, there's another tax, we're overtaxed. We're not. I mean, if you look at that and you compare the cities, here's Los Angeles, San Diego, which went bankrupt almost, is right down there at the bottom. So if you want to aspire to that, we can certainly make it even cheaper. And then you have all the way up to Portland, Oregon, where they're paying per month over $15. So that's also an important thing for us to make that case when we're paying $1.92 and part of that is going to subsidize something which in other cities is not paid for through that sort of funding. So I think we do have a compelling case. I do think we have a very good department ready to implement all of our TM D L requirements and our clean water requirements. And I think the culture is changing as well. I think the culture is changing, not just internally, but externally. I was, you know, there's affordable housing project that I was, that we had a groundbreaking on two days ago and the architect came up and said, check this out, this is where we re-infiltrate the water in the front. And, you know, three or four years ago, I wasn't having those conversations with architects who were doing affordable housing or market rate housing. So that culture is changing out there because of the good work we've done, but let's make sure we can win.
Okay, Mr. Rosengold.
That was quite articulate, Mr. Garcetti. And I want to bring up that issue if we can win. You guys are great, so my discussion isn't with you. Everything you put together is fine. You took my motion of two years ago, you made a whole thing of it, and we're actually on the right path. So I'm very pleased. But I'd like to share a chair over there and ask the mayor's guy to come back up and Mark Gold to come back up. And I just want to say that I'm on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. We had a meeting last week and in this public forum, the county got up and they spoke and they talked about the same issues we're talking about and they talked about a strategy they were thinking of doing. I think you made it very clear and I appreciate your integrity there when you said this just happened within the mix of looking at the budget and the situation we're in and you kind of put some apology in there, which is very cool. But I want to win on this. First of all, I want us to be able to fund this. This is as critical as us sitting here in the room. The question is the timing and the process and the approach. And Mr. Gold, you're on that Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission and you understand the politics of the county and the city and you understand timing and you also understand what we're really trying to do. I'd like you, without a clock, to give us some insight as to what you think we should be doing so that this will happen.
Well, the biggest thing you have is the problem of time, but just for backstory, if people don't know about this, is that the county has been planning for quite some time to go forward with their own measure and they want to go March of next year. And the amount of money that they're looking at is somewhere, what they've been saying publicly in the, for the entire Los Angeles County, for the, in the $100 to $120 million per year range. So if you think about what your shortfall is, your fair share of that will pretty much pay for the general fund deficit. So from the standpoint of moving you forward in any way, shape or form, what's currently on the table, and it could change, it hasn't been written yet, but what's currently on the table that's been presented numerous times publicly is not going to solve LA's problems at all. All it's going to do is get you off the general fund. And so it puts you in a very difficult position. I didn't know, as closely as I've worked with the city, that this was going to happen this week. I have to be honest. I mean, I've gotten very little notice the same way you did. It's been discussed for a long time, it doesn't mean that the details have gone forward. I think this 45-day issue, that there's an extra 45-day in here, that really threw everybody for a loop. And obviously you guys want revenue by January of this year, which is, of next year, which is a real big issue. I think, I don't know whether it can be done, the only thing that I'm thinking about is during that 45 days, depending on what notice goes out to the public, is that people are going to basically have to sit down round the clock, leaders on council, in the mayor's office, probably some people from the public, and try to figure out what's the best way to do this in a way that's going to help it pass. Because I felt like President Garcetti brought up the key thing in my mind, which is, and you've echoed the same thing, which is why bother if this thing isn't going to pass and we got to make darn well sure that we're doing it in a way that's acceptable to the publics. I'm shocked you guys have not seen the polling. And so I can tell you, I've been presented on the polling four times already in public areas, and so the fact that you guys haven't gone in makes no sense to me. So the polling is very, very strong and positive and it leans, and this is important for you, President Garcetti, it leans very, very strongly towards moving to the property owners, which was a big surprise to all of us in a big way. And I think that's positive, rather than the two-thirds vote, which has been the 218 burden that no one's wanted to really try to take on directly. So that's my two cents on that. I'm here to help any way I can.
Are your instincts, since you're in this as a life?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah. That if we work closer with the county and worked in it and put it out next March, would that make sense? Or I'm fearful that right now our cup runneth over due to all kinds of circumstances, that people are going to just open it and say no, without realizing this is as critical for us as anything we've ever done.
Unless something changes dramatically with your negotiations with the county, the county measure, if it passes, everyone's going to feel like, hey, we solved the problem. For the city of Los Angeles, it's not going to do anything but get you off the general fund. So it's not going to move you forward on basically 80% of the funds that your staff has demonstrated very strongly that you need to move forward. So it's going to fail in that regards. And so unless something dramatically changes in your negotiations with the county, where you get a much, much larger percentage and maybe they've been grossly underestimating the amount of revenue that the $55 per parcel is going to generate, then you're going to be in a position that's not going to help at all and you're going to be, have lost a year. And so that's the big concern here. And again, I know it's a teeny city, not comparable in any way, shape or form, but Santa Monica sort of saw the writing on the wall and decided to go solo on this two years ago, 10 bucks per parcel to do that. I know it's very different, but I think the politics of it, I think, is similar from the standpoint of them basically saying, I don't know if the county is going to really look out for the city's best interests overall.
So in conclusion, what would you suggest we do at this point?
Well, I'm not 100% clear on where any flexibility on time is right now, but I think trying to make sure that the language is something that the council is comfortable and supports and what's actually getting sent to the voters, the property owners, I think is very, very critical. And I think not being 100% wedded to the scheme that's been laid out here from the standpoint of funding, but maybe saying, is there a better way that maybe polling would better support? And I know you don't have time for new polling between now and then, but sort of looking at the existing polls and taking that information and trying to make the strongest political recommendations, I think that needs to occur as soon as humanly possible and if it, you know, literally in the next few days.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything from the mayor's office about what I think is between the rocks and a hard place at this point?
Not really, Councilmember. One thing that I know, as he has stated, is that we stand to gain very little in working together with the county on this. The reason I say that is that if we go into, if we work with the county, I think that the most that we can get right now is 65% of the proceeds. As you may know, the county...
No, 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 that's not the right number.
35? 35%, I hate to tell you.
Yeah, I transposed the numbers, I'm sorry.
We'll take it.
Yeah, that's right.
That's our negotiation.
Things have changed in a short period of time.
And as you might know, there is a complaint against the county with regard to their TM D L compliance and there is great pressure for them to find a way to deal with that. I'm not sure whether it is the best, it is in our best interest to contribute our 76% of our vote so that, you know, the county can resolve its problem. The county has its problem, we have our problem. If we sued, like we were a few years ago before we got into Prop O, we were liable. And if this happens again, we are going to be liable. We're not going to be jointly liable with the county. And so I do believe that we should move ahead.
If I could just go back to you, one more question about Santa Monica. What do you see in how they did it that we could extrapolate and possibly use that we haven't used so far in how we're thinking of the strategy?
Well, I was actually the campaign chair for that and one of the things...
You're hired.
I'm sorry, what? Thanks. For free, I was stupid.
You're hired.
So, yeah, even better, right? But we went the two-thirds route. We felt like in Santa Monica, we, you know, after seeing Prop O and how easily that passed, that it would be a slam dunk, we passed by 100 votes. And I thought that was very illustrative. If you think of Santa Monica as being probably the most environmental city in the country, or at least in the state, and it only passed by 100 votes. And so I think the Fairbank polling in conjunction with the Santa Monica results leads me to believe that the property owner route is definitely the right way to go. And I was not there until those two things occurred. So I think that was the most illustrative.
Thank you.
How much did they raise for the Santa Monica?
10 bucks a month.
How did the campaign, how much did the campaign raise, do you remember?
It was about, it was about $100,000 campaign.
That's all?
Yeah. Well, it's just, it's only a city of 88,000 people.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Mr. Garcetti, when you talked about how the energy for Prop O happened, I know I've got a lot of television shows on that and we were all engaged in all of that and we felt a sense of ownership of our own future. Could we not, in the campaign, come up with some of these similar strategies?
Well, one of the things, I mean, because I think Eric and I were at the epicenter of, there was a nonprofit outreach committee that was set up comprised of stakeholders from across the city, but, you know, I think we both spent an enormous amount of time wrapped up in a room calling people for money. I mean, ultimately, what was the amount of money that we had to raise?
You were over a million.
Yeah, we were over a million, but this is probably cost at least $2 million today's, well.
So are we wed to any particular timeframe when we would stick something in the mail to get people to vote? I guess that's my big issue now. Greg is nodding his head and saying, yes.
Well, to hit this year's budget, we are...
We've got to do 45, well, forget about this year's budget, I just want this to win.
But remember, if you run next year, you're in competition with the county, so just keep that in mind.
But that's not, that's not going to help.
Right.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. But, you know, we undertake something like this, we undertake it to prevail, not to, you know, pursue a principle and then you're assuming that we assume that, oh, everybody's going to agree with us because everybody's not going to agree with us. I mean, I try to learn from every campaign and the last one we just learned from was Measure B, close, really close, but, you know, it's kind of like you either win or you don't. There's no shades of gray in that. And this is my fear. Yeah, Mr. Garcetti, do you have any...
No, finish.
Okay, let's go to the right now.
Must be you. Extreme right or must be you.
You can have your poll...
Pictures, where are you?
It's a kind of an interesting hybrid. Sometimes you think you know it with any surprise.
16 years.
You want me first?
Why don't we go out there and then work back in?
Go out there and work back in. Number of questions. As, when was the last time we did a parcel tax vote?
The specific fee?
No, on any kind of parcel tax vote, citywide, that we mailed out to parcel tax owners and asked them to vote on anything. When was the last time we did that?
I think it was, I think it was the gang initiative. That was last year.
No, that was on the ballot. This is a mail-out vote. When was the last time we did, used this method?
We found no record of one that has been done in recent, the last 15 years.
Only street lighting districts, which are local, right?
No, but we, I'm talking about citywide mail-out vote, we've never done one of these. Okay. Okay. So we've never done one of these. We've never mailed out to the parcel tax, a parcel tax vote. And when was the, you referred to the Fairbanks poll, when was that conducted?
That was October, November 2008.
November of 2008, before the Prop B vote?
Yes.
And, wow, it's really disconcerting that we've never even done this before in terms of a parcel tax vote. So we really don't have a measure, or do we, I'll ask it affirmatively, do we have a measure of parcel tax voting in Los Angeles relative to only those people who would be voting to tax themselves and property tax?
Can I attach to that? I mean, if you've seen the polling, Mr. Gold, I mean, what was the turnout model that they assumed even at the county? Was it like 2%? Like how many people, what percent? If in a special election, you know, we're getting barely 10%, sometimes 8% in some, if this is, you have to actually mail it back?
Well, yeah, that's a little bit of a different issue. I'm assuming, I'm assuming, the reason I ask that question is because I'm assuming that for somebody to get this thing, a complicated thing in the mail, that they have to unfold, then pull out, vote, fold it back, send it, put a post stamp on it, I assume we're not going to pay for that, and send it back, that's a pretty tenacious voter. And historically in Los Angeles, those voters have been extremely conservative. As far as I'm concerned, the absentee ballots in Los Angeles are still leaning conservative and I would assume that the property tax voters would be even more conservative. And so I'm just not, I'm just not seeing this. This is sort of like, to me, the question is not so much how do we present a proactive strategy because it's easy to say we love clean water. I mean, you know, I'm just wondering about how you tip a cow. Because it seems to me it's easier to tip a cow in this case than it is for you to support, you know, find the arguments to support it. And all you have to do is undermine it from the opponent's view and it seems to me that that would be easier. So we haven't done any poll on what people, how, you know, the fact that Measure B went down, the fact that we're in the worst economic situation and property owners are being hammered, foreclosed upon and everything else in default. You think somebody that has a default notice and there's thousands of them in any given day, so you pick when you get the mail and on that day there will be at least, at least 2,000 people that will be in default on their homes? I don't think they're going to be voting for a parcel tax. So I am, I am really grasping, you know, I'm 100% Sacramento environmental voter, you know that. But I am really, I want the society to reflect those values as well, but I don't want them want them to go backwards. I do not want them to go backwards, because coming back, approaching this is a more difficult thing. Now, a third tipping cow issue? That all we're really doing here is replacing general fund money?
Well, the current subsidy of the general fund, but there's program funding included in the proposed fee as well.
Are you going to guarantee the voters that the current subsidy from the city of Los Angeles is going to remain? So all they're doing is supplanting the general fund money that's going into the fund? Or it could be said that?
That one small percentage of that would be, yeah, there's no doubt that that's the case.
The $25 million that we give annually to this fund?
Right.
Is not going to be replaced by this money? It is, it is going to be replaced. So it doesn't take much of a consultant, even that consultant that signed up the voters in the wrong district could figure this one out, that all you have to do is tell people this isn't really for water, it's just to replace the general fund money.
You mean as a counter campaign, someone who would be looking to undermine it?
Exactly, that's what I'm talking about, the counter campaigns. That's not your field, I don't even expect you to answer that question. I would present that to Mr. Gold, though, he knows, he knows very well what I'm talking about.
No, I understand all the things you're talking about, and, you know, I was really hoping that, that, I never would have thought you guys had not seen the poll information, I already stated that, and I was hoping that John Fairbank would be here to basically explain it, because the reality is, all of your questions that you asked, John would have, I mean, you know how smart that guy is, I mean, he would have answers to all of that.
No, he polled that I would lose, so don't assume that.
I'm not saying he's always right.
All that's part, is he?
All right.
Thank you, and it wasn't close.
But one thing I want to, one thing I want to say, Councilman Alacan, is that it's not like the economy was great in November, right? So, I mean, so just remember, he was seeing 60s countywide, targeting some areas that, you know, you would expect would be adamantly opposed to it, but overall he was seeing 60% support at a time when the economic, you know, the bottom had already fallen out of the economy in November. So it's not like we're talking about stuff a year ago, I know things aren't better now than they were there.
But how can you measure, but, Mr. Gold, you, no, he did not answer all the questions. How can you possibly measure how parcel tax voters are going to mail in their vote on this? Because we have no history of that. So you can take the poll all you want, but you're, but you're, yeah, you're not certain that the liberal voters that you polled, who said yes to this, would mail in the ballot, which historically they haven't in the city of Los Angeles. Now, unless we're ready to mount a huge absentee ballot campaign that drives the voters to fill out those ballots, and to do it under 218 restrictions, where you can't give them a stamp, and you can't walk them to the mailbox like in the old days, and you can't hand them the ballot, you know, I just, you know, we got to deal in reality here. I'll vote for the thing, you know, why not? But, but do I think that it will pass under these conditions? I'm not, I'm not convinced at all by, based on what I'm hearing. I haven't heard one issue about how we're going to, how we're going to get the liberal segment of the property tax owners to vote in a method that they've never voted before in the past. That's the, that's the key to the strategy. Not whether or not they support it, they do support it. But how many of those people will toss out their ballot before they even read it? A huge segment of them. And we have no way of knowing. And I just don't want to go backwards. Not to mention, there are several very current negative messages. Prop B, we didn't, we didn't do our due diligence, we didn't present this in a timely fashion, we didn't have an effective deliberation with the public. That's one message to undermine this. Another message to undermine it is Prop B, as part of the first message, but the third message is that, that we're merely supplanting general fund money here, and it's really not to clean the water.
Councilmember Alacan, if I may, I'm, by no means am I pretending to venture into an area that I do not know, and that, the polling and all of that.
Sure.
But I do want to say this, and that is that to the extent that we're limited to only do educational outreach and informational outreach, we do have every intention to hit the general public with that educational information outreach.
You know what, I'm sorry, Enrique, but you're right, this isn't an area you're familiar with. It is an area I'm familiar with, you know, and I like to win. And if I lose, I know I'm going to lose. So there's got to be a reason for it. I don't understand the reason for this. And besides, you're right, Mr. Fairbanks needs to be here, I think we need, we need to have, you know, perhaps the mayor to be here, I don't know, but we need to understand why we are being presented with this at this particular time. I haven't received one phone call from anybody on this. Nobody called me and asked me to support this thing. That's a political issue, Enrique, and you'll never understand that.
Well, he might if he runs for office and judges, but we do.
Yeah, but you guys understand, how many of you got, I did not get a phone call.
The only one piece on information, I agree with what you said, Mr. Alacan, but the supplanting, just to be clear, supplanting money in this case does not go, it doesn't supplant back into the general fund into vague areas, it goes back specifically, it does free up, it's just not enough money that would go specifically towards clean water. So anybody listening to that, it does go, and that's what the plan would be for this. So even that is a small piece, but I think, as Mr. Gold and others have said, it's only 20% of what we probably estimate we need every year. Just want to say that for the record.
Thank you, and there's a number of things that bother me, and Steve, I hope the mayor's office doesn't ever say again that this is driven by the budget, because it's the fastest way to kill this thing. If people perceive it to be a bait-and-switch issue, that's going to kill it. So let's focus on what it's about, and that's about cleaning of stormwater and cleaning N-Peds and all that stuff, that's what it's about. The budget issue should never be discussed again in any context on this, because that's the fastest way to kill it, okay? So I hope you won't do that. And I agree totally with Richard on the problems with Prop B, was that one of the great feelings was we didn't include the people in it, and they perceived this as we were putting something over on them. And the news media ran with that and destroyed us on it because we couldn't make the arguments fast enough, because we didn't include the people in the discussion. So whatever you do, whether you go forward to this today or not, there has to be a tremendous outreach in a very short period of time for people to understand what it's going to do. I believe, first of all, on the polling, whether we saw it or not, anyone who ever deals with polls knows very well, a poll is as good as the day it was taken, and from there on it degenerates very rapidly. Something that was taken back in October, remember, is almost meaningless in today's world, particularly because the world has changed so much and so drastically since that timeframe. You said we were already in the recession in November, we were just beginning the downward slope, the rapid downward slope in November, and I think people's feelings are much different than they are today. You know, we weren't even beginning to see the bottom at that point, we were just on the slope down to it. So I'm not so sure that poll means anything, particularly since it was countywide. The people in Downey and Woodyard don't think like the people in half the city of LA, I got news for you. So I think we ought to take a better look at our, internally at ourselves, to see if it has any prospects whatsoever. What is the last day we have to pull the trigger on actually, I mean, we're starting a process now, but there's a couple of points along here.
The Tuesday of next week.
So the Tuesday of next week is the day we have to actually pull the trigger to-
No, 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 I mean-
That's not right.
There's, there's a trigger that comes a while.
Yeah, there's a second-
We can make a decision if we want to to move for this discussion with the, with the strong belief that we want to pull it back.
Well, okay, what is the pullback timeframe? That's what I want to know.
Here, here this.
Here.
They have to mail out the notices by Wednesday of next week.
But that is a-
The notice of the notice.
The notice of the, the pre-notice, okay, the second, and then 45 days from that point is the second-
Yes.
-trigger point.
Decide not to mail out.
Yes.
Okay, so the real trigger, the drop dead date, if you will, is 45 days from next week.
That's correct.
That's correct? All right.
That is correct.
And to me, to say to you, in 40, in really 50-something days, you've got to put together a really full pledge campaign to talk to people, explain to them what it's about, is a near impossibility, near impossibility.
Plus, there's a $450,000 price tag on that mailer.
Yeah.
How much?
$450,000.
$450,000 on the mailer.
I mean, I'm just curious, has anybody, it's not, I'm not asking the engineers here, but, you know, if the county and the city work together, if we could get the mayor and the supervisors into a room, we're 800,000 parcels out of 2.1 million parcels, correct? And if we could get the legitimate share for us to continue to do what we need in water quality, or at least put that discussion for one more time, wouldn't that not be a better deal if next March, the county and the city really were on the same wavelength from the public trust standpoint? Would that make sense, Mark? Or is it impossible?
Since, you know, being the one who is largely involved in the negotiations, and, you know, my staff as well, we're far apart right now. We're far apart, not only in the potential split, but possibly in the governance as well. The county is moving, and moving in the right direction, but can we get to a point where I could then give you my opinion that we have strike a good compromise? I mean, I can't say that now.
Rather, the mayor, who represents the 4 million of us, and the five supervisors who represent the 10 million of us, in a, in a context of that relationship, took some real leadership in on that, put it on your lap, and I urge the mayor to look at that as an opportunity.
And in the negotiations, I think it'd be fair to speak for all of us, that we will not just go neutral, we'll actively oppose a county proposition that has a bad split for us.
It's not only the split, but it's also, I just want to let you know, it's the amount. And so you guys might get the split you want, but because they're more worried about the least common denominator, the signal hills of the world, to be quite candid, naming names, that, that, that's, that's really where they're going. So they're going to ask for a lot less money than the city of LA, which would solve the problem.
And what I understand you're saying, too, is that their dollar amount is not indexed over five years upward, it's going to be a flat amount, that's it.
It's a one-time hit.
One-time, one-time, and the dollar amount-
What the polling was on, too, I might add.
And the dollar amount doesn't begin to equal what this will equal, which is the problem we have, fixing the problem we have.
What polling was on what?
The polling was only on a one-time hit, up to $55 increase per year, just so you understand, that that was the top asymptote of where the polling went.
Which is a little more than half of what we're looking at in the fifth year.
Well, you could look at this as a, as a $76 increase rather than a $55 increase, I think that would be a fair way of comparing apples and apples.
But my point is, it's everybody's watershed. It's not just the city of LA, it's the county, the water flows through all of these communities.
Yeah, but legally, we're responsible for the boundary of the city of LA, and if we were to be sued, we'd be sued on our efforts, not on their efforts.
The compliance is with us.
Yeah, so. Now, I was just going to add one thing, as you, as I look at this notice you're sending out, I think Mark has a very good, valid statement that needs to be put in here in the second paragraph when you're explaining what it is, and that is, if we don't do it, that the likelihood is, and you're, I'm looking at the notice, Mark.
Okay.
The notice that they're planning to mail out, that if we do not do this, that we are out of compliance, and the likelihood of legal action forcing the city to take action is very high, and would be more costly in a shorter period of time. Something of that statement, because that's the reality, if we don't do this, then we're going to get that, and that is uglier than this. And I think people have to understand that, that the option is worse, the option of not doing anything, the no project option, is a disaster for us financially, worse than this will be. So I think people need to understand that, and you put, and you put some language in there, that really is not just a statement of fact, but a statement of fear, really. I mean, they need to understand that. And then secondly, you know, I'm only going to vote for this today because I understand the need, I think this is another Prop B screw-up, quite frankly, and I'm really appalled that we're sitting here saying next Tuesday, we got to do this or else. And the mayor better, excuse me ladies, but better get off his ass and get out and start talking to people about this, because this can't be another Prop B disaster. And the only way that's going to happen is we engage neighborhood councils immediately, we engage every chamber of commerce immediately, and everybody other group, Kiwanis Club, Rody, I don't care who it is, we got to talk to everybody and do it quickly, because otherwise you have no chance. In fact, I really think the best chance we have is at the polling place, not at this kind of mail-out program, because there you'd have a chance of winning, but then we have to wait, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Question for somebody.
Yes.
If this did move ahead, who's got a plan for a campaign for this? What's the plan? And who's going to, who's going to run it? Who's going to raise the money for it? How are you going to do it? Tell us how this is going to get done.
It's not your job, Enrique, it's the mayor.
Somebody, somebody tell me.
I think it's few.
Does anybody know?
Not many.
No, I'm serious.
Don't be pointing at me.
I just want to know.
We have a long cheer.
Tell me. Prop O.
We have a long cheer. Thank you for cheering the committee.
Everybody's wanting another personal.
Dr. Williams, would you like, Dr. Williams?
Mark Goodwin left the table. Okay, all right, somebody tell me something, okay?
Well, one thing that we, we have a plan for the department, is an aggressive outreach plan to meet with neighborhood councils, community groups, blood clubs, and I know I'm not helping, I'm just saying what we can do. All right, all right, we'll stop at that, but.
Does anybody, do you have any consultant? Who's driving this? Just tell me who's driving this. Where, who are you taking your direction from on this?
It's a leader in this trade.
Hello? It's funny.
It's a-
Steve, are you driving this?
We're working together with the Bureau of Sanit-
That's a diplomatic answer.
With the Bureau of Sanitation.
Okay, who's the person who's calling the shots as to how this is supposed to roll out? Is it your office, Steve? Because none of this makes sense to me, I have to tell you. This is a jumbled mess, and I would like to help you, but I, at this point, since today, I don't really see how I can. So, you know, give me a pathway.
Well, let me just give a piece of history for what it's worth, and some of the history's been stated before. And I know there's been discussions, in fairness, about allusion to this, that this would be in the budget, we didn't have much more detail than that, so it came forward in the budget. When we did this last time, it was because some council members went to our CLA, who at the time, in fairness, was very skeptical, with at the time a somewhat more skeptical Bureau of Sanitation, this was not because there wasn't a willingness or knowledge, but I think you had been told that the expectation, nobody would ever vote for this, let's try to minimize the cost because you have to balance your budgets. And we pushed the CLA to at least do the research, and working with friends in the advocacy community, we did, we, outside of City Hall, we spent some money, and we commissioned a poll, and the poll said it could be done, and then we took that case to our colleagues, we voted for it, and then we started a campaign outside City Hall. That's how it happened last time. It was kind of a deliberate process like that, it was one that, I mean, it wasn't necessarily a process that was all about public information, that we said that's what the political campaign is about, for people to be able to spend that time to say, we know we have a compelling case, we'll take that directly to the voters, or we're not. This has not happened that way. And I think, like I said before, the culture has shifted enough so that we have a good progressive environmental mayor on this stuff who wants clean water, we have a Bureau of Sanitation feels confident about going to the people and asking them for something, we've got a CLA's office that knows that we can do this as well, and we've got a council that's done it, that's led the way, but that's not exactly how this one transpired. And, and like you, Mr. Smith, I mean, voting to move this forward is really delaying by three days a decision, because for me, $450,000 is not an inconsequential amount of money, plus you lose a little bit of public faith when you start even saying we're going to be sending something, then 45 days later, we send out something that might be another $450,000, I don't know what the legality, if we have to then tell people we're not doing it. But one way, even if we don't, to tell people in the papers or whatever, like, no, we decided not to do that right now. When we don't have the county piece and knowing what, what we can negotiate with them, what are, you know, I think we can be pretty effective negotiators, too, and we can call the supervisors that we work with and say, look, you know, we want a certain, we want a different structure of this, we want to get engaged, we want it to maybe not end after, you know, be a flat rate, but actually go up over time. I mean, the bottom line is the people of Los Angeles deserve and want clean water, they want it fishable, swimable, drinkable standard, they want to be able to do that in the ocean, they want to do that in the rivers, they want to be able to do that in our lakes, and[1748.28] And they want water that gets re-infiltrated back into the ground, the same week that we talked about our, our phase one and our phase three adoption for water conservation. I mean, the same week, this is a huge, huge part of the project. We've got the prototypes, we've got green streets, we've got, you know, wonderful trash inserts, we know how to do this stuff. Let's do the process as well as we're doing the production of the work in, in your bureau, and that's on us.
Okay. Um, just getting back to, you know, I, maybe there's nobody in the face who can answer those questions that I got. Steve, or Mr. Angola?
Thank you. This is very important to us, Madam President, Madam Chair, and what we would like to request you today is to give us the opportunity to go back, regroup, and come back to you on Tuesday, when the full council will, will, will consider the item, and we will bring you a comprehensive campaign plan on how we intend to do this.
Okay. Uh, yeah, well, yeah, okay, that sounds nice. Um, let's, uh...
You can have a source of funding or do...
Yes, uh, let's, yeah.
And we will discuss the source of funding in the plan as well.
Discuss it or identify it.
You can do it after that.
You're going to discuss it or identify it?
Uh, we will identify.
The source of funding for the campaign?
Uh, the four-hundred-and-fifty for mailing, and we can, we can...
We know that. We know that. We're talking about a campaign for how you will actually prevail, win.
I think that's something that you probably shouldn't be discussing in City Hall, but...
(laughter)
No, just under, I mean, and it's not to keep anything from the public, but, but under the, our, I mean, before it's on the ballot, we have a little bit more leeway, as I'm sure Mr. Alakon will say. But, you know, commitment, I think, is what people are looking for, for collaboration.
Don't print anything that's wicked. Don't print anything that's wicked.
Let me say thank you.
Mr. Smith has something in it already. You need to really look at it.
I'm sorry. Two things. Thank you for that remark, Mr. President. And, uh, secondly, I just wanted to point out that should the committee vote to move this forward to council, consideration of, of setting a public hearing date for protests, authorizing the notification to be sent out of that public hearing, we have prepared a draft resolution that we will provide to the clerk that would be required for the adoption of procedures for that protest hearing, as, as required by the state constitutional provision. We'll make this available to the clerks, so they can be scheduled also on the agenda for when council considers this matter.
Okay. Um, before we take an act, Mr. Smith, do you want to say?
I was just going to make a motion.
Um, okay. That's fine. I, I was actually going to ask each member before we take a vote.
You can do that.
One of here's recommendations.
My recommendations, we voted out without recommendation to the floor, and then wait